The time is 6:00 PM. We will now call this regular public meeting of the Board of Trustees of UMBLE Independent School District to order. A closed session of the Board will now be held on the matters contained in the notice for this meeting. Should the Board determine that any final action, final decision, or final vote be required with regard to any matter considered in such closed session, then such final action, final decision, or final vote will be made upon reconvening of this public meeting in open session. The time is 6:00 PM. The time is now 7:00 PM. We will now reconvene into open session. Thank you for joining us tonight. Reminder that the meetings of the Board are open to the public but are not a meeting of the public. The UMBLE ISD Board of Trustees meet monthly in a regular meeting to receive reports from staff and take action from recommendations of the superintendent. The Board receives the agenda and all supporting documentation several days in advance of the regular meetings, which allows us to ask and receive answers to many of our questions in advance of the regular meeting. Therefore, lengthy discussions are not always necessary on every agenda item, but as a Board, we do have the appropriate knowledge and preparation for responses regarding the content of the meeting tonight. There are students and other guests present. To maintain decorum, respectful behavior is expected. Disruptive behavior and/or comments will not be allowed. And with that, our first item. Our colors tonight are presented by the Kingwood Park High School Air Force JROTC. I would ask everyone to stand for our Pledge of Allegiance and salute to the Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Put arms. Pose. Colors. Right, ace. Or, arch.
We will now observe a moment of silence. Thank you. You may be seated. Moving to our next agenda item, commendations and recognitions. Dr. Fagan, can you please introduce tonight's inspiring moments?
Absolutely. It's great to have everyone here tonight. The Texas Music Educators Association, also known as TMEA, Annual Conference is the largest music education conference in the nation. Each year, TMEA invites outstanding music ensembles to perform at their conference. This year, two ensembles from our district were selected. Kingwood High School's Only Men Allowed Tenor Bass Choir, who performed at our December meeting, and Grove's Elementary Percussion, who are performing tonight. Grove's Elementary Percussion Ensemble submitted a video recording, which was assessed for quality of performance and for demonstration of proper performance etiquette. Grove's is one of only four elementary school instrumental groups selected to perform at this year's convention. Pedro Huertas, the music teacher at Grove's Elementary, is going to tell us about the music the students will be performing tonight.
Good evening, Dr. Fagan, Board of Trustees, and members of the UMBLE ISD community. I would like to thank you all for the opportunity to share our music with you tonight. On February 10, 2023, Grove's Percussion proudly represented Grove's Elementary and UMBLE ISD at TMEA's annual convention. As an ensemble director, I am honored to have done so with such a talented group of dedicated young musicians, the incredible support of our parents, our administration, and the Fine Arts Department. Grove's Percussion started in 2018 as a platform to provide extracurricular music opportunities for fourth and fifth grade students, demonstrating a very solid sense of rhythmic expression. This by invitation group has turned into a pitched and unpitched percussion performing ensemble, participating mostly at school pep rallies, family concerts, and the UMBLE ISD Fine Arts Festival. Improvisation and composition play an important role in the musical experience Grove's Percussion seeks to provide these young musicians. As does step up from our regular music class, students' ability to create musical patterns over eight- and sixteen-beat phrases on the spot is further explored and challenged. A collaborative and democratic learning environment is fostered by encouraging students to make and justify group decisions regarding a song's musical structure, preferred instruments to perform, input to song selection, and composition of original songs and more. Tonight, we will be performing three of the pieces we played at TMEA. We will start off with Catch Bottle by John Madden, for which the students compose the bridge section. Our second song will be Oye Como Va by Puerto Rican composer Tito Puente, which contains drum solos by Jonathan Waters and Lucy Gatlin. And the final one will be a student favorite, which is Firework by Katy Perry.
Good job. Thank you so much for representing UMBLE ISD at the state level. You guys were fantastic and great job by Mr. Huertas. That's a lot different than my elementary music class. I just want you to know. Okay. February, you may not know this, is Career and Technical Education Month. CTE students are doing some special things on their campuses to raise awareness about CTE, and they asked also to present at the February School Board meeting. There they go.
Good afternoon. My name is Rebecca Carriçales. I am a senior at UMBLE High School and a CTE ambassador. This month is CTE Appreciation Month, and we would like to help commemorate and thank all CTE departments and CTE teachers. Currently, there are nearly 200 CTE teachers, over eighteen... Sorry. 180 unique CTE classes, over 1,600 CTE students in the district. Tonight, you will hear how crucial and impactful CTE is to the future of UMBLE ISD students.
Hi, my name is Caleb Bell. I'm a Kingwood Park High School CTE ambassador, and today I'm going to be talking about CTE ambassadors and what we do as a whole. So, our role as CTE ambassadors is to bring awareness to classes and UMBLE ISD classes in general. As campus leaders, we share our own experiences as students, but we also provide resources to guide students and maybe elementary, middle school, even high school students to kind of help them figure out what they want to do when they do get into high school and then eventually when they graduate and go off to college. So, we kind of just help the students find their own education path and figure out what they want to do with their lives. We promote classes and opportunities, and we also promote our own projects at our each individual schools so that it kind of advertises to the students that these classes are here. You get to pick what you want to do when you do grow up, I guess. And you kind of like, you get to choose what you want to be able to do. And it's okay to like, choose different things and dabble in other things so that you're able to like, choose your own career.
So, my name is Cassandra Latta. I am a senior at Summer Creek High School. My CTE journey started in eighth grade. I took business info management. I learned many valuable lessons, such as writing emails and making presentations. But being able to take this class made me realize that business was not something that I was passionate about. So, I changed pathways into health science. And that's where I truly found joy in learning about the human body, medical terminology, and CPR skills. My junior year, I was accepted into the Health Science Theory Clinical Program, where we are able to do rotations at hospitals and earn a Patient Care Technician certification at the end of the year. I'm currently taking pharmacy technician program... The Pharmacy Technician Program at Atascocita High School. I do an internship at CVS, so being able to take these classes are giving me real-world experiences and getting to actually see the work environment in real-life situations. So, by taking these certifications now, I've not only saved thousands of dollars, but I've been able to work with amazing teachers who have truly cared about us and care about our post-high school career plans. I plan to further my education at a four-year university and use my certifications. So, being able to be part of the CTE program and the ambassador program has helped me grow into a leader, along with helping other students across the district find their way. So, thank you, UMBLE ISD, for giving students across the district opportunities for greatness.
Hey, good evening. Thank you, everyone, for coming. My name is Leslie Loza, and I'm a part of the Atascocita High School CTE ambassadors. I am a senior. And just like Cassandra over here, I started off my CTE journey in eighth grade. However, mine was a little bit different. I actually had two girls from my now-teachers class come to my classroom to speak to me in eighth grade, and they were talking about all these kinds of things about healthcare and how they got to participate in the hospital experiences and clinicals. And as a person who had no background whatsoever or any family affiliations with the medical field, it was just, it seemed out of world to be able to actually participate in those classes. So, it was very comforting to know that Atascocita High School actually provided those courses and those real-world possibilities that would actually help me find my interests and what I actually would like to do outside of STEM courses that many students don't really affiliate with. Those who feel like they don't categorize in with those STEM fields, they just feel like they're so out of place, which is why CTE courses are very important. They help students who have interests other than those basic core-level courses to actually feel comforted and feel at home in their school and actually prepare themselves for the world outside of high school, which is something that I really appreciate now as I will be continuing my journey at Texas A&amp;M and I will be pursuing a Bachelor's of Science in Nursing and hopefully then go into travel nursing. So, just exploring the world. And I didn't even know that it was a possibility before I got into the CTE courses. And overall, it just opened up my experiences and opportunities like tenfold, and I was able to do things that I didn't think I would be able to do before. And I just really thank the CTE program. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Abigail Anquiza. I'm a senior and a CTE ambassador at Kingwood High School. So, now that you all have been able to hear some student testimonies about the UMBLE ISD CTE program, I would just like to take this time to thank the CTE teachers and the school board for supporting CTE. As teachers, they prepare their students for their careers outside of high school. And furthermore, without the leadership of Dr. Fagan and the school board, we would not have these CTE courses that allow students to explore their interests beyond the core subjects, such as math, science, history, and English. And those, like, these courses would not exist without y'all. Next year, as a freshman in college, I plan to study math with a concentration in data science to hopefully one day become a biostatistician. But I wouldn't have been so certain about this career pathway without the CTE courses I was able to take at Kingwood High School. So, to start out, first of all, I took Principles of Health Sciences, and I knew I loved healthcare, but I just didn't realize that I didn't want to work directly with patients. But now that's something I know. Second of all, after taking computer science, I was able to learn a little bit more about Java and Python, which are programming languages that are essential to my career as a biostatistician. And then lastly, as a CTE ambassador, I've been able to work on public speaking as well as my leadership, collaboration, and teamwork skills. And all of these skills I plan to use in my career as a biostatistician. Thank you.
In addition to thanking these five amazing student leaders from CTE, I want to take a minute to thank the CTE department teachers and staff we have in the audience. We have Amy Walker from UMBLE High School here today, Alicia Smith from Summer Creek High School, Sarah Hansen from Atascocita High School. And from our district offices, we have Larkin Lesweare, Dr. Michelle Baker, Cheryl Jones, Kim Young, Parker Blair, and Dr. Dardo Bazil. Thank you, guys, all so much for what you do for our students. Thank you so much for sharing with others the opportunities available through CTE courses and UMBLE ISD. UMBLE ISD is committed to providing every student with a personalized education that prepares that student to achieve his or her goals and dreams chosen by them and their families. As you can see here today, sometimes taking a course and learning that you don't like it is just as important as taking a course and finding out that you do love it. So some of our own children have created their own CTE wheels throughout high school by taking a little bit of everything to eliminate most things. But in any case, ladies, well done, well spoken. Thank you for... You all are very impressive individuals and with really great careers ahead of you, and so we're very proud that you'll be representing UMBLE ISD as you move forward. Thank you very much for being here and for sharing the great CTE work that our entire staff does every day. Okay, our staff members, as you've heard, go above and beyond. Ms. Jerry Monbaron, Chief Community Engagement Officer, is going to come to the podium and introduce our superstaffers.
So UMBLE ISD employees go above and beyond each day to meet the needs of our students, and we want to recognize these employees for their important work in keeping UMBLE ISD great. Each month, campuses and departments select an individual to be honored as a superstaffer for their outstanding work in advancing student achievement. A drawing is held, and three honorees receive additional recognition at the school board meeting, including a gift card thanks to a sponsor. And this month, as well as this year, Superstaffer Awards is sponsored by Whataburger. So being honored as the elementary superstaffer tonight is the music teacher from Fall Creek Elementary School, Stephanie Galvan. Also joining her up front is her principal, Mrs. Talent. So let me tell you about Mrs. G, as she is known on campus. She believes that all students can sing and all students have musical talents. She provides a variety of opportunities for students, including an instrumental club, Cardinals Con Calori, where students can explore and show off their musical gifts. Regardless of whether she is working with our pre-K students or our fifth-grade students, the passion Mrs. G has for music shines through. Above all, she has a love for Fall Creek students that helps them take flight. Congratulations. Being honored as the secondary superstaffer tonight is the Special Education Lead Teacher from Westlake Middle School, Lynn Sibley. And joining her up front is her principal, Dr. Joey Washington. Serving our special-needs students is a heavy lift for anyone, but not for Lynn Sibley. Lynn serves our Westlake Middle School parents and students with heart, grace, and love. She is a staff member who is never afraid to step in and help with any student. Due to her genuine connections with parents and students, she is trusted and depended on by all. Lynn exemplifies what all educators should be. She is simply amazing, and our school is super excited and honored that she is a part of our team. Congratulations. Being honored as a support superstaffer tonight is the 504 Specialist over at the Old Lakeland Building, Crisilla Hensley. And Richard Meyer, the 504 Coordinator, will be joining her up front. So let me tell you a little bit about Crisilla. She's an amazing teammate and coworker. Our team draws daily inspiration from her personal and professional motivation and positive words. Crisilla is especially adept at reminding us not to become so focused on the ever-present urgent needs of the moment that we overlook the many blessings we receive from one another and the overall good that we consistently accomplish together. Above all, Crisilla provides our team with timely encouragement during difficult times to eagerly pursue what is best for ourselves, our team, and for the campuses and students that we serve. Congratulations, Crisilla. That concludes tonight's recognitions.
The next item is public comment. The board encourages comments from citizens of the district or from district employees. Anyone wishing to speak either as an individual or as a representative of a group may do so following the procedure outlined on the agenda. The board asks that comments pertain to public education issues and be no longer than one minute. Remember that the board may not discuss or act upon any issues that are not posted on our agenda for tonight's meeting. If an issue mentioned is listed on tonight's agenda, the board will defer discussion until the appropriate time during the meeting. In addition, the board has adopted complaint policies that are designed to secure at the lowest administrative level, a prompt and equitable resolution of complaints and concerns. Complaints brought by students or their parents, by employees, and by citizens may be heard in accordance with board policies. Each of these processes provides that if a resolution cannot be achieved administratively, the person may appeal the administrative decision to the board as a properly posted agenda item. Copies of our district policies on public participation in meetings and filing complaints are available on the UMBLE ISD website. Our first speaker this evening is Maya Richard.
Good afternoon. I'm Maya Richard. I'm a senior at Atascocita High School. I am here representing Diversify Our Narrative, a student-led initiative that seeks to celebrate the diversity in UMBLE ISD. I am here to urge the board to continue to protect the diversity in school libraries in order to allow students to freely express themselves. I am beyond appalled at the attempts to censor books in our libraries. Banning books is banning knowledge and stunts our growth as individuals who are able to think for themselves and form their own opinions on the world around us. I urge you not to let the obtuse discriminatory opinions of a few dictate district policy. We, the students, would like the freedom to choose what we read in our libraries. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Scott Murray.
I want to address the parents here tonight and the parents watching. We're in a box with our kids. We are the ones, the parents are the ones, that instill the values, traditions, faith, principles, and morals into our kids. It's not your job. It's not a teacher's job. And what these people do, we're in a box and we're surrounded by entertainment. We're surrounded by some crazy teachers, some, not all, corrupt unethical boards, and clown shows like this that are paid for with our tax dollars to come after us. It has to stop. Nobody wants to ban books other than pornographic books. But you, as a board, refuse to address anything a parent has, anything. You limit our time. You don't want to hear it. None of yous care, and it needs to change. I don't know what it's going to take, but parents, you have to be involved in your student's life.
Thank you. Thank you. Your time is up, sir. Sir, your time is up. Next, we have Justin Laurie.
I told them, "Don't worry, I'll be back in one minute, maybe less." Did any of you see on the board, see the article from the Houston Chronicle? It has the lowest performing districts in Houston metro area. I will spare you looking it up. Houston, sorry, UMBLE ISD middle schools ranked second worst in the Houston metro area. Shame on you. You've done nothing. But for some reason, instead of discussing this at the board level, what is wrong, how to improve, how to make sure it doesn't happen again, instead in January, we bring in singers, a band, and lots of flowers for everyone. Atascocita High School, once a highly-desired high school, now has unsafe and unwalkable hallways due to blatant overcrowding and, let's face it, flat-out crime. What do you do? Nothing. Instead of discussing at the board level, we have music, we have singing, and we have flowers. If a parent finds obvious porn in our school libraries, the district hires an outside law firm to mitigate it. Who's paying for it? Where? What is it called?
Thank you. Your time is up. Next, we have Madison Dabala. Madison. Next, we have Jennifer Morris.
Hi, I'm Jen Morris. I am one-third of the founders of the Dream Team Scholarship Endowment through the UMBLE ISD Education Foundation. The other founders are the well-known and admired Marilyn Mann and Jonathan Blakelock. Tonight, we wanted to highlight the Dream Team Scholarship Endowment because it's a one-of-a-kind scholarship. It has minimal constraints with a goal of being attainable, student-centered, and inclusive as possible. Our goal is not to put priority on class rank, GPA, volunteer hours, sports, or club involvement. Instead, we look at the essay content, hardships, and dreams of our students. Our first year as a scholarship, we had 123 applicants. We awarded eight $500 scholarships and one $1,000 scholarship. There's two of the students, they became game wardens, they're studying to become musicians, doctors, stylists, movie directors. We have some studying to be nurses, teachers, and engineers. Tonight, I wanted to say a sincere thank you to everybody who's donated to our scholarship, including board member Robert Scarfo.
Your time is up.
Thank you. Each donation...
Thank you. Thank you. Now we have comments by individual board members. I will begin with Mr. Marcus Holmes.
Just to piggyback on what Ms. Morris mentioned, I want to highlight Houston Education Foundation. Jerry, what you and your team do day in, day out is fantastic. I would implore any and all teachers, if you have the wildest dream in terms of edifying, amplifying your students' learning, there is money out there, right? There's teams that will help you craft your reply to that scholarship. So again, I would say the Houston Education Foundation, just want to focus and highlight on that again. You gotta use it, right? That money is going unused. Also want to say thank you to Mr. Huertas. You know, quick little shout-out, yes, Groves Elementary, what they're doing, again, just fantastic things that we're doing in the district. I really love seeing these young people coming out and speaking, their mind and their voice.
Thank you. Mr. Sitton.
Thank you, Madam President. You know, I tell you, when we do come out here and we have kids perform, it makes me proud. When kids perform in front of people, it makes me proud. Those are things that aren't measured on a state assessment test. The fact that we have kids from CTE programs that are going on to do great things, you can't measure that on a state assessment test. And by the way, that's not what we value in UMBLE ISD, is a stated assessment test. The value of a student on one given day in any given year. We value their education based on their personal growth and what their families, what their parents, what they value. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. Mrs. Morrison.
Well, ditto to Mr. Sitton and what he has to say, because I care about the kids, and the kids show it all, and it doesn't matter what you made on a one-day test. It matters on where you're going to go and what you're going to do. And just huge kudos to every one of you ambassadors. You said it all, and you said it beautifully. So congratulations to all of you. And I look forward to seeing what all you do in the future. Also, thank you very much for the input. We do utilize it. We do listen. And all the different things that our kids are doing. I mean, the performances, they went to state. We've got band kiddos that have gone to state. We have swimmers that have gone to state. That didn't have anything to do with test scores. It has to do with what the kids want to do and what they need to do. And I am so proud of our students wanting to express themselves. And kudos to our student who spoke tonight. So that's what I have to say.
Thank you. Mr. Scarfo.
Thank you. Just a few shout-outs. First, I want to thank Mrs. Morrison and Mr. Kirchhoff, who were there also as well at Oaks Elementary on Friday and then Bear Branch Elementary Manners Lunch on Friday. We got to read, do classes. That was, that was great. Enjoyed doing that. And also, in terms of our counselors, there were, let's see, one, two, three, four that were named 2022 Crest Award winners, counselors reinforcing excellence in students, supporting what they do. Counselor at Atascocita Springs Elementary, Groves Elementary, River Pines, and Riverwood Middle School. So that's just great. And also want to give a big applause to the Kingwood Middle School eighth grader Morgan Sands, who won, she won the spelling bee championship, and Elijah Beatty, who was the runner-up, he was from Jack Fields Elementary in fourth grade. I attended that, that Saturday. I got to tell you, that is a real competition. And as you can see, I mean, eighth grade, middle schoolers and elementarys competing against each other. And if you can just imagine what it's like when you're sitting there with three seconds left and you're on the foul line and you got to sink it to put your team ahead, there's a lot of pressure. And those kiddos just did great. So that was a lot of fun to get to go to that. And also to Zoe Gallegos at Riverwood Middle School. She was selected as the school specialty Crayola Colors of the World contest winner. That was really great. And guys, I talked to our ambassadors before the meeting started. I just thank you for being here. It's very impressive for you guys to get up there and speak and to hear about what you're doing. And also, congratulations on this CTE Appreciation Month to Mr. Larkin and all his staff. CTE is near and dear to my heart, and I'm glad to see over the years that the state has gotten behind that. And if you look at the program we have and you talk about rigor in classes, there are just so many opportunities. The course, I'll call it a course catalog, and anybody go online and take a look at all... at all of the different pathways that students can explore. And as the, uh, one young lady said, like, well, I found out, I didn't like that. So I tried something, and boy, that was really great. So it's good to find those things out early on, say, okay, I'm gonna avoid that. But it's just really great. What a program that we have, uh, here in the district. I'm, I'm just really happy to have seen that grow over the years and that the, the district has supported that and put the resources there. Uh, I want to thank all the speakers who came tonight. Whether, uh, any of us agree or don't, or disagree with what is said, I think it's great that people will come and speak their mind. I'm glad that our ambassadors weren't held to a minute to speak. I, I think the same courtesy should go to all of our constituents because that's who we're here to serve. And to hear them speak what's on their mind and, and let us know what they're thinking and why, and so that we can, uh, timely respond to them. Uh, I, I really do not like this idea of people only having a minute to speak. We, we're not limited to a minute to speak, and I, I just don't think that we should continue that. But, uh, be that as it may. Anyway, so thank you and congratulations to all our, uh, announced, uh, Teachers of the Year Award winners. That's, that's great, and good luck as you go on in the competition. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Parker.
Uh, Mr. Sitton, Ms. Morrison, and, uh, Mr. Scarfo kind of touched on everything I wanted to say. But you, um, CTA, CTE ambassadors did an outstandingly great job tonight. But there's something that, that the audience didn't see. They also sent emails asking that we thank their teachers because they're, they're so thankful for their teachers, and we really, really appreciate that. And I think, uh, everybody up here, I know I can speak for myself, we are so thankful for our CTE teachers because that's what it's all about. College career and military readiness, and, and you guys are why we're up here. The Groves TMEA is such a big deal. And I just, I know as we sit here and we watched those Groves students perform their percussion here, we're gonna get to see them in later years as they go into middle school and high school. So it's really, really exciting. But anyway, thank you so much. And Ms. Dixon.
Thank you. Um, well, I'm gonna be very brief, but one thing I'll say is I think it was evident tonight to, that the students are our why. That is why we are all here. That is why we do the things that we do. There are so many wonderful things happening in the district, um, more than I could ever mention here. I mean, I try to repost every single thing on my feed, on Twitter and on Facebook, and I thank you for that, uh, students, for filling that up because, um, it's truly an honor to serve in this position on your behalf. The CTE group, the ambassadors, you guys were also very well-spoken. Thank you so much for being here tonight and your teachers. We definitely see that the will and leading into high school is a benefit, and we look forward to your futures and what that all is going to look like. And also, the Groves percussion, truly awesome. At least two of those songs are on my playlist already, so I need the other version. I need the student version, uh, Dr. Fagan, and that's all I have. Our next item is comments by the administration. Dr. Fagan.
Well, we have a little bit of a report later, so I won't take too much time now. But just wanted to say, uh, uh, Umbel ISD staff is, is second to none. Uh, they work with students, uh, from where they are to where we can take them forward. We embrace the opportunity to connect with each and every one of them about their dreams, finding their ways, and our teachers truly care about each one as an individual and as a person. And, and I think you heard that through the ambassadors tonight. But I could put up hundreds of other students here, and they would tell the same stories, whether it's their counselors, or their CTE teachers, or their AP teachers, whoever. Their teachers inspiring students every single day, and they are the best staff anywhere. And, um, you know, sometimes people, we know that some of the star stuff is confusing and maybe a little difficult to understand, and we're, we're gonna work really hard to make sure that we clarify a lot of that stuff tonight. But, um, but our teachers are great. They're doing a great job every single day. Our leaders are in there, our instructional coaches. Um, we, we are doing incredible work in the classroom, partnering with parents, making sure that together, we're helping every, every student achieve their dreams. Uh, that's what's most important to them. 2016, I was gonna say this later, but in 2016, we actually brought a very large group together in this very room. Uh, and it included students and parents, staff members, business leaders, community leaders, every different kind of group, and we mixed them all together at tables. And we literally had just an honest conversation about, in this day and age of high-stakes testing and, you know, this like chasing the score, what is it that the Umbel ISD community wants? What does it desire for its children? And we were, we received really, really, um, loud feedback that teachers didn't want to teach to test, that they didn't believe in, that are misaligned to grade level, that parents didn't want their children to learn to hate school and learning, that they wanted us to focus on the whole child like Umbel ISD always had. And to make sure that we were developing lots of competencies in our learners well beyond, um, that, that you can measure on a test one day, one year. Um, and so we actually have, you know, the portrait of a graduate that we, we worked toward because that was the direction we were given by the community. And we have all of those data from 2016. We'll have to dig those all back out. I actually was looking through them the other day, um, and, and reshare that information because sometimes our memories get short and we forget, which is why this team works on a goal sheet that goes clear back to 2017 and shows every single piece of the safety work we've done for five years. It shows every single one of the budget work we've done for five years, every single strategy, every single initiative, the ones that we checked off, the ones we said, oh, that was not the right way, and, and the ones that we're moving on, um, going forward. Certainly COVID added a different page to that, that document. But, um, we continue forward. And my point is that memories get short, but Umbel ISD as a community has been very steadfast in wanting the best for their children. Uh, they want them to be joyful, whole children who love what they do every day, who have friends, and who work toward their own goals, not our goals for them. And I think you heard that tonight, just impromptu. Uh, and I'm very, very, very proud of our teachers and our staff in every single classroom across the district that work hard every day to make sure that this happens. So thank you to all of you, uh, all of the principals, assistant principals, and leaders who are moving this district forward in the best interest of students. So thank you.
I remember that. Prior to board service, I served on the Portrait of a Graduate Committee, and I think we're right on target, so that's good. Okay, we will now have updates from our board associations and committees. First committee is the advocacy committee. Mrs. Parker.
Well, Ms. Lamont Dixon, as you know, uh, you and I met with a, about a half dozen of our, uh, US, uh, staff, of our US senators, and, um, many of our congressmen and/or their staff. So, um, we were able to present Umbel ISD's, uh, legislative agenda, and it, it was a great, a great thing earlier this month. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. Audit Committee, Mrs. Morrison.
We do not have a report tonight, but we are meeting in March.
Thank you. Building and Planning Committee, Mr. Sitton.
Uh, yes, you'll see that we do have an agenda item. Uh, we have found another piece of property, um, a 60-acre tract close to Centennial Elementary that will be on the agenda, uh, for your consideration tonight. I do, did get a text before I came in here tonight that, uh, there's some dirt being moved, uh, in and around the 90-acre tract. And, uh, gonna do a little digging on that tomorrow to see, uh, see what's going on there because the last I heard, all funding had been pulled, and they were kind of in disarray. So I know community members are gonna want to know more about that as well. Uh, but, uh, we met last week, uh, as a committee. Uh, lots of construction projects going on, uh, dirt being turned and, and still going up at multiple campuses throughout the district. And so, uh, Bond 2018 projects are still going on. COVID 2020 and the supply chain put some of that stuff back, but they're all on, on track at this point. And then we're moving forward with 2022 projects as well. You can go online, um, uh, Bond 2020, uh, Bond 2018 and Bond 2022 to see where we're at in each of those projects at this point.
Thank you. Board Superintendent Evaluation Committee, that's me, nothing to report. Finance Committee, Mr. Scarfo.
Uh, thank you. Uh, no report. We meet on March 2nd, uh, really kicking off the, the new season.
Thank you. Education Foundation, Mrs. Morrison.
Yes, uh, Mr. Kurchoffer is out tonight. So we hope the Umbel Rodeo and Barbecue Cook-Off Committee has now gotten some rest because they really worked so very hard to prepare for this year's event. And we have to say, it was one of the best that we've had for a while. Great preparation, great leadership, leadership, and great weather. All came together in a beautiful way in those two weekends. Uh, Mr. Sitton, please pass on our gratitude to the entire community for their volunteer efforts that they put out in keeping this tradition not just alive in Umbel, but growing bigger each year. The deadline has passed to submit a grant application to the foundation. So if you were one of the 138 who got it turned in on time, congratulations. There was a 29% increase in applications. And no pressure, Ms. Mom Baron, but does that mean that we'll get 29% more grants given out? But that's, you know, just a little pressure from Mr. Kurchoffer. You know how he is. So, but thank you, thank you, thank you. And truly, Mr. Sitton, it was a wonderful two weekends. And I, me personally, I never saw so many volunteers. It was wonderful. It was outstanding. So thank you again from the foundation.
Yes, Mr. Sitton.
So, thank you for, for all those kind words. You're right. Uh, it takes an army, takes a village, uh, it takes a lot of community partners. Early, um, rough estimates, we served nearly 20,000 community members in that two-weekend period. Uh, it was the largest show in the history of the event. If you take out the, the third show that we added this year, it just said, what would have happened with just, uh, a Friday, Saturday show? Uh, it surpassed Cody Johnson's, uh, weekend. So really excited about the community, really excited about the community partners. Uh, and I can't thank our volunteers enough. And, uh, hopefully, uh, at next, at the next board meeting, we'll have all the financials and, uh, the, uh, six-figure-plus check that we'll be able to give back to the foundation.
Sounds like more grants. It's absolutely a fantastic time. So I'm looking forward to seeing everything at the next meeting. Uh, Kingwood Super Neighbored Council, Mr. Holmes.
Yes, just one update. Uh, the city of Houston is installing a safe sidewalk, um, experience to the Bear Branch Elementary community. Um, that's gonna be installed along Tree Line Valley between Garden Oaks and Village Oaks Drive. So very excited about that. I believe bids are going out November tw- November of, uh, 2024. So again, getting a little clarity around why it's taking so long. But again, very excited that it is underway.
Thank you. Action items from closed session. Item 4A, Personnel Recommendations. Mrs. Parker, do I have a motion?
I move that the board approve the administration's personnel recommendations with addendum as presented in closed session.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Any abstentions? Motion passes? Yes, yes. Motion passes, uh, five and one abstention. Moving on to item five, our consent agenda. 5A, Approval of Minutes for the Regular Board Meeting Held on Tuesday, January 10th, 2023. Consent? Item 5B, Approval of Minutes for the Special Board Meeting Held on Thursday, January 19th, 2023. Consent? Item 5C, Approval of Minutes for the Special Board Meeting Held on Wednesday, January 25th, 2023. Consent? Item 5D, Approval of Goods, Professional Services, and Non-Construction Services exceeding $50,000 in the aggregate or $25,000 individually. Consent? Item 5E, Bond Fund Transfers and Amendments. Consent? Item 5F, Budgetary Transfers and Amendments. Consent? Item 5G, Tax Refunds. Consent? Item 5H, Board Authorization of Inter-Local Agreements. Consent? Item 5I, Approval of RFP Number 2021-007R-10 Educational, Educational and Curriculum Subscriptions, Internet and Web-Based Access and Software. Consent? Item 5J, Approval of RFP Number 2023-102, Services, Repairs, Maintenance, Installation District-Wide. Consent? Item 5K, Approval of RFP Number 2023-103, School Safety Products and Services. Consent? Item 5L, Purchase of 60.58 Acres of Real Property Located on Westlake Houston Parkway in Harris County, Texas. Consent? Item 5M, Delegation of Authority to Contract for Certain Utility Services. Consent? Item 5N, Deductive Change Order. Consent? Mrs. Parker, can I get a motion on the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda items 5A through 5N.
Do I have a second? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion passes, 6-0. There are no action items on tonight's agenda. Next is our information items. Item 7A, Intruder Detection Audit Report. Mr. Perkins will share the findings from the audit.
The Texas School Safety Center conducted an intruder detection audit pursuant to updated legal requirements. 12 schools were reviewed since our last board meeting, and there were no findings.
Thank you. Are there any questions or discussion from the board regarding this item? Thank you. Item 7B, Annual Performance Report for the 2021-2022 School Year. We have a presentation for this item. Uh, Ms. Schultz, Mr. Roan, and Tong Uticret. Thank you so much.
While they're walking up, I just wanted to do a brief introduction. So this is an annual item that we're required to present every year. It has a lot of different information in it. Some of it is last year, some of it is not last year because the state is not terribly timely, um, with giving us the information that, that we need to do the report. So that's why they allow us to do multiple years in one report because we don't, we don't have all of the CCMR data for our students from last year, even though it's February. So, um, these are the things that we struggle with in, uh, in reporting out. The other thing is, there's a lot of, um, you know, in, in a quality state accountability system, there, it's a criterion reference system. The, the state says, if all of your children grow in reading, you get an A. If all your children grow in math, you get an A. If all of your students are college or military-ready, you get an A. But our state system is nothing like that. There are algorithms, there are point systems, there are half-point systems. Um, it's, it's a misleading in that, uh, the word approaches would lead a parent to believe that that means approaches grade level. But in reality, or as I've been told by TEA, this is a stretch system. So approaches is actually on grade level, and then meets is above grade level, and masters is well above grade level. So it can be a little misleading when people are reading through it. So we're going to do our best tonight to share both what is required by the state, but also the things that better align with the values of the Umbel ISD community, like all children growing in reading and math, all children college, career, military-ready, rigorous coursework that is available to all children, and the numbers of students who are taking those, those classes and where they're going and what they're doing. So, um, we're, we've kind of blended this report together with both the state's requirements, with our values, and we're going to hear directly from the experts who have been leading this work and do this work every single day. Um, so we're gonna start with Dr. Roan, who is our, our data wizard in the district and understands far more about those algorithms in the background than anyone else, uh, ever will. So thank you, Dr. Roan.
So you bear with me on this first slide. Uh, Texas Education Code, Chapter 39, requires that each district publish an annual report that includes the TAPR, which is the Texas Academic Performance Report.
Our screens are blank, rusty.
Is that rusty?
So we may have to look over to our right. Okay.
But there, there's nothing to see right now, Mr. Scarfo, so I'm sorry. Okay. Yeah, it's not, it's not terribly exciting just yet. So we, we were required to, uh, to report on the Texas Academic Performance Report. That's roughly, uh, for our district, it's more than a thousand pages. So we're, we're gonna- So we're, we're going to give the short summary tonight. Um, we also have to give campus performance objectives, a report of violent criminal incidents and information from the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board. Uh, components of this report are available on the district website and under the accountability tab. A hard copy will also be made available to the public within two weeks of this board meeting. This information can also be found on several websites. Uh, the Texas Performance Reporting System, the twenty twenty two Accountability Reports, T E A website, and also Texasschools.gov. Uh, another point is that the district is accredited by the Texas Education Agency. In addition, all campus improvement plans are posted on the district website in the state and federal program section. These include a comprehensive needs assessment as well as goals and performance objectives for each school. Also, Texas statute requires the, the district to publish a report of serious violent and criminal incidents by campus. That's also on the accountability website. Dist- uh, discipline incidents in this category comprise less than two percent of the total discipline incidents during the school year twenty two, twenty one, twenty two. High school and middle school campus incident numbers, uh, were higher than in twenty twenty one and the majority of the increase was in the category possession of controlled substances. In addition, uh, we're required to publicly report district performance against state targets in special education, state performance plan. And this report reflects the district's performance against the state targets, uh, for a given year. And T E A requires special corrective action if a district is not in compliance with the indicators eleven, twelve or thirteen, which are related to timely initial evaluations and transitions. And the special education determination status for twenty one was needs assistance. And so we have submitted a corrective action plan to T E A. Is that working now? No. All right. Sorry. So as, as, uh, what Dr. Fagan mentioned, this TA, TA P R report contains data over several years. So you have to be very careful about drawing conclusions because we're talking about it at least three different school years, uh, sometimes on the same page of the TA P R report. For twenty one, twenty two, the district employed six thousand sixty six staff members, an increase of two point six from the previous year. Of these, sixty eight point six percent were professional staff. That's teachers, professional support, campus administration and central administration. The financial information is no longer printed on the TA P R, but there is a link on the TA P R to the T A website. The district's adopted tax rate was a dollar thirty eight. That's a dollar three maintenance and operations and thirty five cents for interest and sinking fund. And the instructional expenditure ratio was sixty one point nine percent. The district had an unassigned fund balance of one hundred and eight million eighty four thousand eight hundred and fifty nine dollars as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty one, and this represented twenty four point two percent of the total general fund expenditures. Our district is growing and is growing more diverse. For fall twenty twenty two, we had just under forty nine thousand students. In the TA P R, it talks about the enrollment for the school year twenty twenty one. It was reported as forty seven thousand four hundred and seventy seven students with an ethnic distribution of twenty four point six percent African American, thirty seven point nine percent Hispanic, thirty one point one percent white, point three percent Native American, two point eight percent Asian, zero point five percent Pacific Islander and two point nine percent two or more races. Included in, in the total enrollment was a rate of forty one point four percent economically disadvantaged as well as ten point seven percent English language learners or emerging bilinguals and fifty one point nine percent at risk. So you can see the changes from the fall of, of, uh, twenty ten to the fall of twenty two. Some of those categories are, are quite different. You can also see the increase from twenty ten where we had thirty five thousand six hundred and seventy eight to almost forty nine thousand in just that length of time. Now we're going to talk about the state of accountability system for twenty twenty two. We had forty five campuses that were rated on the A F grading scale. The district was rated as a B overall. There were ten distinctions earned by eight campuses and these were based on star performance in the area of science, social studies, progress measures, closing the gap and post-secondary readiness. And again, more detail is found on the, the accountability portion of our website. And I apologize, this is, is kind of small. Again, this is reproduced on, on our website, but these are the results, uh, from the spring twenty two, twenty two, um, star results from the TA P R. And it talks about, uh, the all student, all grades, when you combine them all together. Star has three levels of achievement, approaches grade level, meets grade level and masters grade level. And what we're looking at is the approaches grade level or above for all students. Some across all grades indicated the district exceeded the state and region, uh, in the performance in reading and social studies. The district also exceeded the state and region at the meets level in reading and social studies and exceeded the state and region performance at the masters level in social studies. And as Dr. Fagan mentioned, it should be remembered that approaches grade level is considered passing on the star. What it takes to pass star is not determined until actually all of the tests are over later in the summer and it varies from grade to grade and content area. In the far bottom right-hand corner, it talks about academic growth. That has to do with, uh, progress of students who made growth according to T E A from one year to the next on star in the areas of reading and mathematics, if they took both tests. And this is reported as a percentage, but it's not a straightforward calculation. And I'm going to spend just a, a minute talking about that growth score. It's actually based on a matrix of twenty one different categories. So it's not just who made growth, but rather did you fit in a certain category? So it, it depends on the prior year performance and the current year performance. And so you could actually get a, a score of fifty percent in a, in a variety of ways. Fifty percent could mean that you had fifty percent of your students making one point of growth and then the rest making zero growth. Or it could be that you had a hundred percent of your students making growth, but only at a partial rate of one half. So fifty percent is not very straightforward. And in fact, some of the growth, uh, methodology is counterintuitive. We're going to look at that upper left-hand quarter about did not meet, uh, in the prior year and they did not meet in the current year. It's actually possible for students to be assigned growth points by T E A, even if they fail star two years in a row. It's also possible to pass star in the prior year in twenty twenty one, but fail star in twenty two and still have growth. So for example, if you have a student who took third grade reading and it took eighteen points, eighteen questions right to pass the third graderating in, in twenty one, and it took twenty points to pass fourth grade reading in twenty two. But if you happen to get nineteen points, you don't pass star in twenty two, but you do get that one point of growth. You have one more question right. So you would be attributed as having growth, even though you failed star that second year. So you can pass star the first year and fail star the next year, but still get growth because the number of, of questions required to pass might increase. So again, it's not as straightforward as, as one might think. It's not just a straight percentage. Uh, I, I have, uh, worked on my, on the, some of the calculations and, and in fact, my computer program is on the, the district website, but if, when you calculate the, the, the A D F accountability, roughly it, it takes about a hundred typewritten pages, uh, to calculate the A D F scores for, for a, a given district. So that's, that's very complicated.
All right. It's okay. Thank you, Dr. Roan. So, um, I'm gonna go back one slide real quick. So in order to tell our story of our local accountability system and the development of our literacy assessments, we need to go back about seven or eight years. And about seven or eight years ago, our elementary teachers relied heavily on a computer-generated test score. Students would sit in front of the computer, they'd take a test and that produced their literacy score. And so it gave teachers a score, but it didn't tell them what those students needed to be informed on literacy instruction. That was the missing piece. So we came together, we brought teachers together, we brought our teaching and learning specialists together. We brought our campus administrators together and we developed a system that we valued. And in this system, it was personalized in nature because it didn't compare students to students. It compared students to their own personal growth. We administered this assessment three times a year, beginning, middle and end. So it gave teachers that ability to provide them timely interventions. They were responsive to what their students needed because a computer wasn't given that test anymore. That teacher was sitting side by side with that student, reading with them, able to observe those reading behaviors in real time. And so what I mean by reading behaviors is teachers were able to observe what strategies are our students using right now to understand meaning of this text? What strategies is the student using to attack or decode these words? That gave them valid information. So it was more than an assessment. It was information for that teacher to go back and do what they needed to do in order to design that personalized instruction for our school year. We weren't waiting for the end of the year for that one single score to tell us how our students were doing. We were providing, getting that information in a timely, responsive manner. So last year, we, um, have our twenty one, twenty two, every student's represented here. It's our beginning of the year compared to our end of the year. It's our growth measure. We expect every single student in our district in elementary to have one year's worth of growth. And what I appreciate about this chart is that, um, no matter where students come in and meet us, because our role is to teach all students, no matter where they enter at that grade level. And so we have above level readers here that started the year above level, but it's still that expectation that teachers grow them and have a year's worth of progress, no matter where they come to us. Um, the bigger bubbles represent more students in that data range. That's the size difference. Now what you may or may not be able to see is there are these red faint dots below the line. Those are students who did not make progress, but we know who they are. We know who, we know who their teacher is. We can select their teacher for the next year. We can get them the resources they need immediately and provide them timely interventions to support them. So when you have an assessment system that you have, um, valid, reliable data, you're able to start thinking even bigger for these classrooms based on this assessment. We serve about twenty five thousand students in elementary and every single one of them are represented up here in a dot with their classroom. So all of our classrooms, kindergarten through fifth grade is represented on this chart. And there are times, um, in public schools that we get buckets of money. That can be Title One money, for example, state comp ed money. This buckets of money is given to us for a specific purpose to serve our at-risk students. A lot of times it comes in not the best timing, for example, a middle of a school year. It's a challenge to figure out how to solve this money or spend this money. So in the past, we might have, you know, tried to find the latest and greatest workbooks to use. But we wanted a bigger impact and we wanted to think more innovatively and we had an assessment system we valued. And we know we educate all students, but our students come to us with impacted factors, factors that impact their learning that is far beyond their control. And so some of those factors are listed here in this box. And so in our personalized individual approach, we assigned a point value to each and every student in elementary. And then we aggregated that up for a total classroom load set, if you will. And so that's what all of those dots are. You can see the campus initials beside them. And then we took the fifty most impacted classrooms across our district. And with our state comp ed funding, we added another teacher to that classroom. Two teachers in a classroom of twenty students sharing and supporting and collaborating in the development and teaching of these students. So in the past, um, I might have twenty students, Dr. Roan may have twenty students. We're the same, right? Not necessarily if my students come to me that first day of school with these impacted factors beyond their control. So we were able to kind of even out the playing field and allocate resources to the students and teachers who needed them. So a success story we have, um, is just as we personalize instruction for our students, we're able to personalize for our teachers and adults as well. Here we have Ms. Valdez in the top left, Ms. Cruz bottom right. And if Ms. Cruz were here with us tonight, she would tell you, and I got permission from her, that, um, you know, it was a couple of years ago, she was doubting her choice of profession. She just really didn't feel like it was a fit for her anymore. Teaching can be very isolating. And as she's thinking, I'm going to sit a year out, I need to rethink my choices here. I don't know if it's a fit for me. Her principal called her and said, I think I have a fit for you. And so for the last three years, Ms. Valdez and Ms. Cruz have been at River Pines Elementary, supporting a group of twenty first grade students, teaching them to read and write in English and Spanish and being very successful. They have their hats on, um, that's seasonal. And what that, um, usually tells our first grade students is I need you to try really, really hard not to interrupt me because they are at small group time. And the benefit of a double staff classroom is this is the time that they've taken their literacy assessment. They've personalized goals for every single one of those students. And then their struck, instruction is tailored to those needs. And the students see both Ms. Valdez and Ms. Cruz. And so this is just an environment where our students are able to, um, set goals, design instruction around those goals, and then you achieve that progress. Again, we're not having to wait till the end of the year for that one score. Um, as I mentioned, we give it three times a year. You see the beginning, middle and end of the year, three columns. If you look at the, um, above level on the beginning of the year, it's about thirty three percent of their students. That's where they were. And then by the end of the year, seventy five percent of their students were above grade level. Again, these students are learning English and Spanish simultaneously and zero percent of them were, um, below level. And so this is a grade level. No, it's not a star tested grade level, but it is a grade level where there's early intervention is key and we need to set these students up for success. So how does this impact student achievement? One of our other classrooms, this data set is from North Belt Elementary, third grade literacy classroom. The blue rings are representative of the students in that class. The orange rings are representative of the rest of the third grade district, um, literacy achievement. There's the scale scores at the bottom. And you can see it's a double staff classroom, impacted students, yet they are performing at the same level or above other district, um, students in that grade on achievements course. So for the past couple of years, our elementary teachers have been busy working on developing, um, literacy assessment, implementing it with fidelity and then engaging in a T E A mandated reading academy coursework. And about two years ago, we embarked on our math journey. And we are not satisfied where we are in math, to be brutally honest. Um, but we have a plan and that plan did start two years ago with the help of our teachers in developing math assessments, kind of in mirroring that same image of our literacy assessments. We're moving from a standardized, computer-based assessment where teachers can sit side by side with their students and watch them perform math task, math tasks that are completely aligned to numeracy and numeracy with high impact standards. And so we, um, are full year implementation this year in our kinder, first and second grades of these math literacy assessments. Part of our action plan is to look at a tighter set of progression standards that will follow using this assessment to drive instruction. using this assessment to drive instruction and make an action plan in a personalized approach. Students can choose answer choice B, the number three beside it, but that doesn't tell us if it's incorrect why they chose that. But when a teacher can visualize and observe side by side a student working out a math task, again, it gives them the power to quickly respond in a timely manner and provide that informed instruction to our students. And so I look forward to bringing that data forward to you in the future.
All right. So we also have in the T A P R, a report of the graduates from the class of 2021. Of these, there were 3,196 graduates, 22.5% attended four-year public universities, 21.0 attended two-year public colleges in Texas, and 1% attended Texas private colleges and universities. And we have data for the individual campuses of the high schools contained in the complete report. Also, we have information about the student attendance rate for the year 2021. It indicates the district rate was 94.9%, which was similar to the state and region. That was around 95% also. The district's annual dropout rate for grades seven and eight, that was 0.1%. And the grades nine through 12, 1.1% were below the state average and below the regional rates as well. When you look at the class of 2021, using state allowed exclusions, 95.4% of the students graduated, 0.2% received a GED, and 1.9% continued on for a fifth year while 2.5% dropped out. What you see here on the slide is the four-year graduation rate without exclusions. This is what is used in the accountability system for the state. This is for the class of 2021. It indicates a graduation rate of 93.7% for all students. But we also have demographics here listed 91.9% for African-American, 93.6% for Hispanic, and 95.2% for white students at the district level. Now we have Dr. You to correct.
I have the privilege to talk a little bit about what we've done to ensure that our students are able to engage with all of our rigorous college readiness assessments and coursework. So you can see that compared to the state, we continue to outperform with our students completing successfully advanced and dual course options. Along with that, we outperform as it relates to our advanced placement and international baccalaureate exams. And I really want to draw your attention to our participation as it relates to SAT and ACT. We outperformed the state by 20 percentage points. And you would ask, why would that be? Well, historically, a lot of districts and schools will promote to their students, hey, you should really think about taking the SAT or the ACT. You know, you need to take that exam to get into college. But they leave it up to the student, they leave it up to the families to try to schedule and pay for the assessment on a Saturday whenever they're available. And some students take advantage of that and some don't. But part of our commitment is we didn't want that to be a factor. We didn't want that to get in the way of students being able to engage with these sort of assessments. So you could even see historically, we also fell into that trend, but we said, you know what? We want to make sure that we provide access to both the SAT and the ACT to our students during the school day. We'll pay for it. As long as you show up on that day, you will get access to a college entrance exam. Not just one, but this year, the SAT and the ACT are provided to our students during the school day completely free of charge because we want our students to make sure that they have options once they're finished with us. And that's really what all of this is about. And like Dr. Fagan mentioned before, you see that the state hasn't even given us data for last school year in terms of how many of our students have taken those assessments last year, but we know that it's going to be up there again, similar to 2020, 2021, when we started down this journey of providing it for all of our students. Along with all of these college entrance exams, we continue to have success for our students as it relates to our college level coursework. Over and over again, students are successful in all of our college level coursework. Now you might look at this data and you say, well, why isn't it at 100%? Don't we want our students to be 100%? And absolutely, I'd say yes. But I want to try to paint an analogy for you. All of these, the advanced placement, the dual credit summer academy, our UT Onramps courses, these are college courses. When students engage in with these courses, this is the same course as Chemistry 301M that a freshman in college is sitting in and they have to do well in order. And our students, by and large, are successful. It would be the same as taking a high school athlete and say, okay, now go win a national championship at the college level. Right? Absolutely. We want our students to be successful and they are successful, not just on the K-12 level, but beyond post-secondary. You could see that over and over again as it relates to our college level coursework. Along with this, we're continuing to increase the opportunities we provide for our students as it relates to take the Texas Success Initiative Assessment. This is an assessment that every single college student in Texas has to take in order to be eligible to take college courses. So you go to A and M, you go to SFA, you go to any school in the state of Texas, you've got to show college readiness using some sort of TSI metric. And we give opportunities over and over again for our students. You see the growth trajectory as it relates to providing this for our students. So remember, this isn't just college admissions. We've talked about college admissions with SAT and ACT. This is college readiness. This is if you don't show readiness, you don't get to take college courses. And we're offering this to our students at a great rate. And you can see the expansion as it relates to dual credit summer academy and our Onramps expansions as well, year over year. I'm happy to tell you tonight, we just had our recent data snapshot with our UT Onramps classes. And so looking at this year for 2022, 2023, you're looking at 82% of students in our Onramps courses are eligible for college credit. To give you some real numbers to put it in perspective. For 2021, 2022, we had 698 students eligible for college credit based off of that coursework. This year, as a data snapshot, we have 1,533 students that have, that have shown eligibility for college credit. And I'm going to remind you, these are the same exact courses that the University of Texas students are sitting in right now that our high school students are highly successful.
This is a graph that several of you have seen before. Dr. Rowan has shared this in the past with some of our measures for calculating CCMR. Dr. Fagan mentioned earlier tonight as well. Unfortunately, CCMR is what we call a lagging indicator with the state. They don't give us the timely data on this. For class of 2021, it's complete. For class of 2022, we only have the data for the students who met their CCMR readiness by their junior year. Unfortunately, many of our CCMR measures that we calculate with our students are obtained during their senior year. You heard our phenomenal CTE ambassadors speak about our CTE programs earlier this evening. And a few of them mentioned very briefly some of the industry-based certifications that they can earn through CTE. Quite a few of those, I don't have Larkin with me to give you the exact number here, but I would say definitely over half of them and probably higher up to three fourths of them require the kids to be almost 18 years old to take, 17 or 18. So that means they're taking those during their senior year. So that's a lagging indicator that we can't show with a lot of our CTE and CCMR. But one of the things we did look at when we looked at this graph from 2021 is that we weren't where we wanted to be with CCMR. So we took a group of students, we took parents, community members. We brought together everybody we could to start brainstorming. What do we want this to look like for our students? Because as you've heard over and over tonight, our goal is to meet each and every one of our kids' individual pathways and what they want to accomplish for when they leave us in number ISD. Some of the examples you've heard us present on the past are the CTE wheel in sixth grade. Loud and clear, the kids told us we need to know the information in middle school. We need to experience it so we can make the best decisions for our career choices to get us ready in high school. So as we're going and finishing year two in that and going into year three, next year will be our first group of eighth graders who took that CTE wheel in sixth grade, using that information to plan their high school careers as they move forward. We also implemented the CTE ambassador program. We knew we needed a way for kids to tell kids about what's available out there. And that was one of the things that came out of this as well. So we've got a lot of great things in the works here to keep working on making sure we're meeting each and every one of our kids where they want to be for their college career and military readiness.
Yes. It numbers, it doesn't say which high school. Each one represents a high school.
I mean, we can tell you later, yes.
We, we know, but I think it's supposed to be anonymous. Is that correct?
Yeah, it's supposed to be anonymous for the purposes of reporting, but we know which high school is which. Yes, absolutely.
Thank you, Dr. Lee. So in closing, what I want to do is, is talk just a little bit about what the Texas Education Agency is going to do in the spring of '23. And we'll get new scores from the students in the spring, but we won't get our actual letter grades until maybe October or November, far into the school year. And it's really too late to do a whole lot of interventions. But they've, they've proposed some changes and just one change document alone is 27 pages. So what I want you to see here, just very briefly, this was our performance in some areas in '22. And there's going to be changes in the components of CCMR. They're going to scale it differently. They're going to change the method that districts are rated to a weighted average of campuses. They're going in general to convert using a new bell curve for A to F. And where expected performance for schools are going to be increased despite the effects of COVID. So if you look overall, we had a score of 82 with a student achievement of 83, using the exact same students, the exact same scores, the exact same data, but the different scaling, we would move to a 77 overall. So that's the exact same student performance, the exact same AP scores. Everything the same, except T E A just changes how they interpret it.
Are there any questions or comments?
Yes, Mr. Holmes.
So explain to me the logic. Or are you saying there is no logic? Because that makes no sense to me. And I think this is why the community has some concerns. I know Dr. Fagan has been trying to, along with the team here, thank you, and trying to help us understand that all playing fields are not being measured equally, right? So to help us understand and interpret the data, can you help us understand the illogical logic behind this?
I don't know that there is a great explanation. I can tell you some of the official T E A presentation anyway, I don't know that it makes sense. But for example, at one time they had the slogan of 20 by 30. And so they were thinking about all the kids need to be, I'm sorry, 60 by 30. So in other words, 60% of all college graduates who are young adults should be college and career ready by, by 2030. And so 60% in the CCMR category would give you a A. So you see here, the component score was 55, so that's pretty close to an A. Now, the thought is we want 80% of the kids ready. And so in order to get 80% of the kids ready, we have to have 80% graduating and 80% entering. So that's going to make that the new score. So really, we want an 80 instead of a 60 to be the new A in CCMR. So that, I don't, I'm hoping that didn't make any sense because it doesn't make any sense to me either. But basically, in 80, in 80 is what they want instead of a 60 with, again, the same amount. When you're thinking of, of AP performance and students who are getting certifications, students who are doing well, they're just raising the bar.
Yes, Mr. Sutton.
The, I've got a comment, then I've got a question. The, the comment is, those of you that have been around for 10 years or longer, you'll remember that the state accountability assessments changed while Dr. Sconzo was still here. And I can remember back then, we didn't, the board meetings weren't videoed. So I wish they were because I can remember him sitting in that chair over there and saying, everyone, I want you to, want to prepare you. And he showed a slide or had him show a slide similar to this. He said, when the new ratings come out, we're going to be at roughly 55%. And everyone in the community is going to wonder why. And there literally was no bona fide explanation other than the way that they were going to calculate was going to be totally different. That's when we first learned that approaching really meant grade level. Because the STAR exam was designed two grade levels ahead of where the students were. And so it was so misleading. And then when, sure enough, when the ratings came out the next year, we were barely at 50%. And it looked like we had gone backwards when in reality, we hadn't gone backwards. It was the way it was calculated. So now my question is, on CCMR, there's multiple ways, there's not one single way to calculate that. Part of it is growth from one year over the next, based on testing. Part of it is graduation. I mean, a school literally could have a graduation rate in the 50 percentile and still score 80% in college career readiness because of the way that it's being calculated. And not every school and not every district is being measured the same exact way. So when you see an article in the Chronicle that was mentioned tonight, you're not comparing apples and apples even with school districts and schools within the same general region or market area. So can you touch on that? I don't mean to put you on the spot, but just.
But it's, it's very similar to that, to that explanation about the growth. There, unfortunately, you'll get a numeric grade. And the assumption is everybody knows what 82 looks like. And 82 is not as good as, is not as good as an 83. But there's a, a lot of different factors. And again, I alluded to the computer code that I wrote. It, it took approximately, you know, 7,000 lines or more to calculate these things. So it's not, oh, I know exactly what goes into an 81 or 82. Because there's a lot of combinations, as you alluded to. The CCMR has a lot of components. It, it changes also. Unfortunately, it's, it's changed about three times. We would have about 9% higher CCMR if T E A had been consistent over the last couple of years. But because they've changed it, we no longer get credit for, for the CTE students who were, who had coherent sequence of studies. In fact, now that T E A is going to make the CCMR more difficult for CTE because they want not only students to pass certificate tests, but also to have a sequence of courses that matches. So for example, if you pass the welding test, you, right now you get credit for CCMR. But T E A is going to say, no, you have to have three years of welding and pass the welding test, no matter how qualified you are as a welder. Or if you're a junior and you start welding and you're, and you're very skilled, doesn't matter, that's too late. That doesn't count, even though you passed the certification exam. So they're making it more and more difficult. And again, you can't see that just by looking at the number. For example, the graduation rate, graduation rate actually could be one of three different cohorts of students. So when you look at that, you don't know, is that the class of 2018, 2019, or 2020?
Can I add one more thing to the graduation rate? Yes, Dr. Fagan. You'll notice that a 96.7 graduation rate results in a 90, which makes no sense at all. But they don't award anything above a 90 unless you have 100%. And then you can have 100. But there is no score between 90 and 100. So the districts like ours that have a strong graduation rate are penalized in the system. The highest we can get is a 90 unless we achieve 100% graduation rate.
That's correct. The TA scales it down. So if you had a 99.9% graduation rate, you get 90 points.
Right. The same with the, and then we're rated on achievement. This used to drive me crazy years ago, not here, but other. This used to drive me crazy years ago, not here, but other, we're rated on achievement, which is how well your students perform, right? And so we have, in the other slide, we have like an 83, right? Some districts are not rated on achievement, they're only rated on growth, because you get the higher of the two. So your students can be really low performing, but meet all those weird matrices in growth, and it looks like, wow, they're doing really well, but when you dig into it, you see that their achievement is actually very low. So they might be growing according to the weird boxes, but their students are actually not even close to grade level.
So it's very similar to what we were saying earlier, it's possible that you could have students who fail two years in a row, or actually go down, and the district will get points for that, so they might have a very high score, but no students passing STAR.
Right.
Conversely, in the accountability system, it's possible for every student to pass STAR, and you still make roughly an F, just depending if you're at the Meets, if you don't have any students at the Meets, or at the Masters level, if you have 100% of the kids, it approaches, you can make an F. Every kid passing, but the district is rated as an F.
And if you're Masters and you go down to Meets the next year, you get no points.
Correct. Even though you might be still a 95% on the test.
You're still, you're still above grade level, one or two levels, but because you went from Masters to Meets, you don't get any points toward the system. It's full of things like that, and so people see the data, and they see the articles, and they just assume it's a straightforward score. They just assume, oh, you know, UMBLEISD, all their kids get, you know, they're getting a B in student achievement, well, that's pretty good, but you know, why is it a B overall? It's not equivalent to that. And I would, this year, we were one of 29% of the districts that were rated on achievement. The other 60-some percent were rated on growth, and they had huge rebounds in growth because they closed schools during COVID, and then they reopened them, and so they got a bunch of those weird points, and there's no conversation about achievement. So I'm proud that we kept our schools open, I'm proud that we're rated on achievement, and I think our teachers are doing a great job. And the data that Lucy showed, the math data that's coming, the data that Tong showed, that's the, that's the heart and soul of the district, and the things that, those are the things that matter. This is a game, and it's a game that's not set up to be, and some districts try to win the game, they do, they focus on the game, they try to win the game, but we're not going to cash in the trust we have with our families to win the game. And so we're not going to give everybody the Microsoft Word exam and say, there you go, everybody's CCMR, because that's disingenuous. We would rather be honest and straightforward partners in learning, and this will fall where it falls.
Thank you. Mr. Scarfo, did I see your hand a second ago?
Dr. Roan, since these are in a public document now, I was going to ask you, could you go back and just put, so people don't get confused, maybe the first one have it say current metrics, and second one say, this is what's going to hap, no, because I had a, I had a thing about it this afternoon, I was looking at it, and then I kind of realized, because Dr. Fagan shared with us the analysis you did of, here's a forecast of what's going to happen, and I got to admit, because I called her, I said, okay, I follow this, I follow this, what the heck does that mean? And, because it was, it was pretty, some of that stuff is like, okay, what are they talking about? And I think that's a problem, too, that people want to just say, because, and I know that's why they created this A through F thing, because people, in general, have an understanding of this, kind of what an A means, what a B means, et cetera, but people don't drill down, as Dr. Fagan said, and I've tried to explain things, too, as well, that it is, it is tough to just take this point and this point and not know that, well, not all points are created equal, so to speak, because, and then I don't think you'd ask the person on the street, what about the, you know, the CCMR? How many times does that, does that flow through the overall grading system? They'd probably think, well, it's just one time, because it's, you know, it's one line here, right? But it's not really so. So it can have, and if you game the system, it could have an outsized positive impact on your score, but if you play it straight up, well, it hurts you in that regard, because it hurts you when you, when you get that final number, that final grade, because it's staggering to see that, how we would, under the same data, all of a sudden, we become a middling C, and we still have, you know, even at that graduation rate, because I don't think we're, because I've been up there, and all these guys have been on those stages and shaking the hands of those kiddos coming by, and they're not just pushing kids through the door, out the door, I should say, to say, well, they're graduating. I mean, these, they've earned it, and, you know, obviously not 100%, but I don't think anybody would be there. So I don't mean to get long-winded about it, but it's just good, though, that if we could continue to get the information out in as, no, it's not easy, as I say, as clear a manner as possible, because not everybody's got the time to drill down or to really understand, and I just hate to see people walk away thinking, well, boy, things have really deteriorated over some period of time. Because one of the things, though, and I guess I'd ask you then, how you respond to this, how we respond to this, to say, well, you know, all the other districts are under the same program, so you can't just say, oh, we got this grade and they got that, but it's not as simple as that. And tell me if I'm wrong, it's not as simple as just of saying, well, everybody's working under the same constraints, but not really, because not everything, as I just said a moment ago, not all things are created equal, and, but it's, it's a hard discussion, so. But anyway, I appreciate that.
No, it has the appearance of being very obvious and easy to understand, and that is technically one of the goals of the Texas Education Agency, is to make it transparent and easy to understand, but I think they failed at both of those.
I just wanted to add one thing that we talked about, and that is that TEA has mentioned that they want this to be a growth system, and, but in the legislation, I believe, it says it's not to be norm-referenced. But earlier, you said, they wait till they get all the data in, and then they set the cut scores, which is, in fact, a norm-reference bell curve system. So I don't understand how that's possible when it specifically says that it's not to be, I mean, it's clearly norm-referenced.
In legislation, it says it has to be mathematically possible for all campuses to receive an A. Now, it doesn't say mathematically likely, they can say 0.000001% chance of getting an A. That's still possible.
Mr. Sutton.
Yeah, well, and to piggyback on what Mr. Scarfo was just saying, I believe Dr. Fagan said it best. We're one of 29% of school districts that were measured one way, and the other 71% were measured a totally different way, but then they're compiled into a report comparing one another. So, the other thing I will say, because I lived it, you talked about gaming the system. I taught at a neighboring district 30 years ago, and the board said, we want test scores to go up. So I'm teaching personal finance, I'm teaching business law, and I'm teaching general business. And they switched schedules to a block schedule, we had an hour and a half per class. We stood by our door, we waited for the counselor to come by with a box of tests, we took our box of tests, we handed those to every student after we checked roll. We handed them to every student, the bell would go off, now you may begin. Another bell would go off, everybody stopped, and I'd go and pick up their tests, put them back in my box, I would go to my door, I'd wait for the counselor to come pick up my And then, and then I had about 15 minutes to teach the aspects of business law. Guess what? Our test scores went up, but my students didn't learn anything about the courses they were taking, period. When I ran for the board 12 years ago, I swore that would not happen here, and our community supports that. But that's, that's a real-life situation that is used as a case study in some of the coursework that several of the board members here have been to, and, but I lived it as a teacher. You want to talk about miserable, because we couldn't teach, we could not do what we were hired to do, because we had to improve a test score and not teach kids to go out into society and be productive by learning the material.
Thank you. Few more slides?
Yes, this is the last one here.
Okay, okay.
Yes, yeah, so we have, as, so as we mentioned, testing versus learning, and also experiential life skills about preparing students for the future, so y'all, I appreciate the board's patience during this very lengthy report, and I appreciate your comments as well. But again, we're going to have a hard copy administration building, and people can contact me for more information, but this, these various components of this, of this report is on the district website under accountability, so.
Will you go back one slide?
Sure.
So earlier, when I introduced them, I said, 2016 Portrait of a Graduate, this is literally the quotes from that committee that they sent to us via, what's the name of that software we use with the stars? Yeah. Anyway, it was software that allowed people to, like, put ideas out there, and then other people could give the ideas stars. And so, thought exchange, and over and over again, they said, we do not want that, high-stakes testing stuff, we don't want what Mr. Sutton's talking about, and our teachers said the same. There's nothing that will drive teachers out of the profession faster than a district that says, oh, all we want here is test scores, because they go into the profession to care about children, and children don't function well in rote memorization, drill them and kill them classrooms, and you will raise test scores, there's a book about this, Raise Your Scores, and the other side of the title is, and Ruin the School. And so, that's, that's, so we wanted to share that, so that it gives a little context for the last few years.
So one thing I would like to say, too, is I encourage our constituents to also reach out to our State Board of Education representative, Audrey Young, because that's where those decisions are made on transparency and clarification, and also to Mike Marath at TEA, because that would make our job a lot easier here if there is transparency and clarification on how all of that looks. So I definitely would like to encourage that. Thank you so much for your presentation and for the clarification. We have, we've heard it a lot, but I'm glad that you took another opportunity to explain it a lot more and answer some additional questions, so I truly do appreciate that. And Mr. Uticrit, I have your name down, packed now. I apologize for the mispronunciation earlier. Thank you all so very much.
Right, thank you.
Item 7C, 2020-2023 American Rescue Plan, ARP Act of 2021, Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief, ESER III update. Is there a presentation, Dr. Fagan? Okay, are there any questions on this item? Thank you. Item 7D, Policy Revisions, TASB update 120, and Administrative Recommendations. Any questions or discussion from the board? Thank you. Our last item, 7E, Financial Services Report, is a monthly administrative item. Are there any questions or discussion from the board regarding this item? Seeing none, moving to our closing items, are there any topics for future board business? The time is now 9:01 PM, this meeting is now adjourned.